Have an August Town Hall meeting when I should be informing you that we've never had an August Town Hall meeting and it's the first time we've actually ever done that. I hope you're all hearing me and that would be, that would be great. I do suspect that you are, but I'll also say that I think just as this is our first August Town Hall meeting, we're going to probably have a lot of firsts that are, that are coming up. But please allow me to welcome everyone, our new families, our returning families. It's a pleasure to be able to meet with you and, and share some information and try and answer some of your questions. I'm afraid we might be a little short on answers, but I think the time that we spend together is going to be really valuable here because I think you'll get to know us a little bit, especially some of our new families and it'll at least be a chance for us to reconnect a little bit. I want to just introduce a few people. Mr. Labella is here, our PTO president. Welcome, Mr. Labella. I'll give you the floor in a moment after I just introduce a few people. I was sort of perusing through the member list before. I'm not doing that now, so if you came in afterwards and I miss you, I'm sorry about that. But I know Mrs. Siddiqui, one of our assistant principals is here. She's among with, she among with many of our staff members have been working very hard this summer to put together a good educational program for, for September. I know Mr. File, I believe he is here. He is our chapter leader, our dean, our law teacher and just a fine individual. So we're glad and he's here and I know he'll share some things with us. And certainly as our UFT chapter leader has been very, very helpful to help connect things for us as best as, as he could with the limited amount of information that we have. I believe Ms. Forsyth, one of our P R A Ps will be joining us. I know Mrs. Palumbo, our parent coordinator is here. Hi Carla. Some of you may have, have been in touch with Carla. I know we have some new systems that have come online. Care Monkey is one of them. I know we got some questions about Care Monkey. If you're here and you didn't get an invitation to Care Monkey, Carla is your person. See Palumbo for, I'll put her email address in the chat. So if you have any questions about Care Monkey or anything like that, Mrs. Palumbo can, can help with that. Actually, I don't think I put that in the right.
Mr. Berman, can you just make a quick announcement about the translation? If anyone needs the Cantonese translation, I can put them in the breakout room now. Ms. Chung is here.
Oh, great. You were the next person, you were the next person on the list, actually, Ms. Wong, our host, a wonderful teacher and S L T member. And she's been incredibly helpful this summer with a lot of things, in particular helping us organize and, and record. Hopefully, we're recording this, this meeting, which is great. And Mr. Labella has been posting it up for us. But yes, so if you do need translation from English to Cantonese, Ms. Chung, our, our community assistant is here to help do that. So there's some instructions that you want to give people to do that, Ms. Wong?
Um, I just need them to let me know, you know, who they are that need it so I can add them to the breakout room, like roster and then it will take them.
How will they let you know?
They can just write it in the chat.
Oh, okay.
That would be the easiest way.
Perfect. So if you need translation. Great. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Wong. I know Ms. McGarrett is here, our computer teacher extraordinaire, as well as one of them, as well as Ms. Chung, our community assistant. So with that, Mr. Mr. Labella, do you want to welcome the parents at this time? Do I have to unmute you, Mr. Labella? I don't think so. I think you should be able to unmute yourself.
I think he's good now.
I'm good. Thank you. No. So once, once we're muted, we can unmute. So I have to keep myself muted just to be polite. So I don't want any feedback, but then I have to beg somebody to let me back in. So either you or Winnie can, can, can do that. I'm sorry for.
I, I, let's see.
Lose me?
Yeah, yeah. Now, now, now we're good. And, and I think the participants can unmute themselves now. We'll see how that works. So, but please go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Labella.
Okay. So listen, first, thank you. We have 153 people here. I will try to post this on the YouTube channel. Our, we have about a thousand views on our S L T meeting from last month. That's great. Our job, whether we're the staff or PTO is to get information to our parents. I know there's a dearth of information and that's because the DOE doesn't give us or doesn't give our, our school members, our principals and our A Ps the information they should, probably because they're figuring it out as they go as well. But, um, so this is the second meeting we're having. We call them S L T meetings. We call this Town Hall. Two weeks from today, on the 17th, we're going to have a, an August PTO meeting. We've never done those before either, but they're really all information sessions, right? We want to answer as many questions as possible. There's very little PTO stuff that I can talk about, but there's a chance for us to, Mr. Berman and the A Ps and the staff and me as in my limited capacity, because I really feel like I'm just trying to coordinate things and I really wish I could do more than I'm doing. But in my limited capacity, we hope to get information out there to all of our parents. And I want to thank the parents who sent me emails and sent me questions. I compiled them. I got rid of some of the duplicates. There were a few parents that emailed me just a few minutes ago or a couple hours ago and they're not included, but if we get through everything, I'll throw those in there. And hopefully, if you sent me an email within the last hour or so, you're here. And if you don't get answers to your questions and we have time, we can put it in the chat and maybe Mr. Berman will be able to help you out. But so I know you want us here for Mr. Berman and not me. So thank you all again, Mr. Berman, Ms. Siddiqui and everybody else there for doing all the work you do. And Winnie Wong, Ms. Wong, thank you so much. You're really great. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Labella. Before we do get into the, to the, to the heart of things, I do want to give Mr. File an opportunity to, to, to welcome families and our staff members. Mr. File, are you there with us?
I am. I'm just, hold on a second.
Sure.
Hi, everybody. I just want to thank everybody for, for coming to this Town Hall. Like Vito said, it's, it's really great opportunity for us to communicate and go over some of the, your questions. I, I looked at some of the questions that we had received and they're excellent. They're, they're right on the money. And I know Mr. Berman will do his very best to answer them and we will try to, to help with that. And, you know, I think the S L T meeting also went very, very well. I was watching. It's hard to watch yourself on, on video. It was a little painful, but I, I do think we're communicating, we're working as, you know, the school community all together. And I, I think that's great. So I just, you know, without going on and on, I just want to say thank you very much for participating in all this. And, you know, we'll be better for it and we'll be better prepared and happier, more secure with what we eventually go, go forth with.
Thanks, Mr. File. You know, folks, there's, there are a lot of things at the heart of our success. You know, a lot of it has to do with our, our hardworking students and the values that, that are instilled by, by the families and that, that the children come in, come with. But, but, but another part of, of our success that, that I really treasure is the collaboration that we have. And, and, and it really is. And I think that's one of the things that makes us particularly strong, especially now. And I hope it brings you some comfort to know that we work very, very closely together, the, the U F T and the C S A here at, at I S 187. We really do work hand in hand together with the students' best interests in mind, with the safety of everyone. So, so, so that's, that's truly important. So, so I thank you very much, Mr. File. So, so yeah, why don't, why don't we just get, get, get started and we can, we can start with some questions, perhaps just, I guess some foundational issues. I'm wondering, you know, I know there's a lot of talk about plans that are due on Friday and school plans that are due on Friday. And, you know, I'm wondering what, what, what that means to people. And I, and I wonder if, what, what, what people think about what schools are working on to submit to the Department of Education on Friday. So, I mean, if you think we're working on plans to submit to the Department of Education about things like, I don't know, uh, who's going to temperature check the children and how often will they be checked? Or if you think we're planning for things like, you know, um, how are the children going to eat in a room together, you know, without their masks on, things like that? That's not what, those are not the things that the city is asking us to submit for Friday. Very simply for Friday, this coming Friday, what we're being asked to submit is the choice of plans that I hope that you saw in the survey. The schedule that our school is selecting for the blended model of remote learning, whether that's having children come to school every third day, whether that's having children come to school two days in a row consecutively and then be home for four days, or a third model, which is fairly confusing, but has all students come to school on one particular day each week and then on some other days. That's what schools are supposed to submit for Friday, along with any other exceptions. And I will tell you that we are asking for an exception. And I know Ms. Forsyth and some of our staff are working very hard to put together an exception for our ACEs students. And I hope you took the time to take a look at some of the attachments that I sent to learn a little bit about our ACEs program. But one of the things that we plan to do, if schools do open in September, is to have our ACEs students in school full time. And our wonderful programmers, Stephanie Passaro and, and Jennifer Muselli have worked out a way that we can accommodate those students coming to school five days a week, which is absolutely, I, I think, a wonderful, wonderful thing for some of our most severely disabled students. So, so hopefully, hopefully that can happen. So with those sort of ideas and, and, and sort of parameters set, I will, I will tell you that around 50% of the families chose the model where children go to school two days a week and then are home for four days a week as their favorite model. I'm surveying the teachers and we'll, we'll, we'll work collaboratively and, and select that best model. But, but beyond that and beyond other plans, information is, is fairly sparse. And I know you've heard a lot on TV and maybe in articles about what happens if kids get sick or staff members get sick. And I can address a little bit about that. And I've heard what, 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 what you've heard too about that. So I'm going to ask perhaps Mr. Labella to emcee a little bit and maybe let's get started with the questions. And if there's anything in particular, please feel free to put it in the chat, although I'm notorious for not paying attention to the chat for a while. So maybe Ms. Wong and Mr. Labella, you can sort of monitor for that, that for, for me as well. I see some other really good questions in there, in there as well. So why don't we start, Mr. Labella, with some of the questions that were submitted in advance?
Right. Yes. So do you have them in front of you, sir?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I can start to go through them or I can allow you to just pick and choose and see if we get through them all. I just sent them to you in the order.
Why don't we start at the top?
Yep.
Why don't we start at the top?
That would be the, that would be the, because that's how I received them and that's how I sent them to you.
Great. Let's do it. So, so I think the first question is really, I think, a really important question because it gets to the heart of a really important issue. The first question is, 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 I'll just sort of preface this one because it's a, it's a straightforward one, is, is about, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to really paraphrase the question. Who's teaching your children? Right? Um, I don't know who's going to be teaching your children. I really don't. I wish I did. It's a, it's a critical question, but I do know that when your children come to school, I know who's going to be teaching your children because I know who our staff members are and I know who's here. I, I do not know who's teaching your children remotely. I do know that if your children's teachers come to school and work a full day, that someone else will be teaching the children remotely. I don't see, I don't foresee teachers teaching a full program at school and then doing a full program at home. I see streaming as a viable solution, but network capacity and bandwidth issues preventing that from being any kind of viable option whatsoever. So as far as who's going to be your teachers and, and that sort of collaboration, I don't have any answers for that. I can tell you that there are some teachers from I S 187 who have put in for accommodations to work from home. I can tell you it isn't nearly enough, nearly, nearly enough teachers to teach all of the children who are home. Because if you think about it, we have a third of the students at school on any given day, which is about 330 students, right? We've got about an enrollment of about a thousand this year coming up, which means you've got about 650 students at home. So far, teachers are busy teaching your children at school. I'm not really sure who's teaching your children while they're at home. And I wish I had a better answer for you. And it keeps me up at night to not have an answer for you. But I don't. So let's move on from there. Um, I guess an ancillary question is, about that is about if, when they're doing remote learning, is the expectation that we're going to have live interactive lessons? The expectation is absolutely we will have live interactive lessons. I know there were some questions arguing against that. I don't really want to get into the reasons why we shouldn't do interactive learning, but I do expect there to be a significant amount of live synchronous learning going on remotely, whether there are, whoever's doing the instruction. I expect there to be a lot of synchronous instruction and a lot of live instruction. Let's go to the next question. Okay. The next question is about transportation and being, so normally being, so, so students who are sixth graders, depending on where you live, you would normally be eligible for yellow bus service. And by the way, if you have your mic on, if you could mute it for us if you're not speaking, if you do want to speak, please feel free to turn your mic on. You should be able to do that. But the question about transportation, if you are normally eligible for a school bus, I don't know if you will receive a school bus this year. I know the social distancing requirements will also apply to school buses. I know it takes months to get the school bus routes in place normally. I don't know that they've even started yet. I would expect they have, but I'm not really sure because the bus companies don't know which parents have opted to either come to school or stay at home. So they can't rightly create routes unless I guess they have that information about who they're creating routes for. So I don't have any information about transportation other than I believe the expectation is that parents will do everything they can to get parents, to get children to school on their own means, whether, I know, I, I had saw or heard the governor talking about children walking, biking, however, they may be able to, to get to school. So if, again, when I get more information about transportation and all of these things, I'll be happy to share it and I certainly will. And I will make it a point to. The next question is about Care Monkey. Care Monkey is a new electronic system that we have to distribute things like blue, blue, emergency blue contact cards, to distribute notifications about 504s and internet use policies and media consent forms. Hopefully, ultimately, things like permission slips for trips and things like that. And certainly in a remote manner, it's going to help us do things that we wouldn't be able to do normally. And when things get back to normal, we'll continue to use it in a way that can streamline and facilitate things for us. Every member of the community should have received an invitation, parents. Students will receive Care Monkey accountable at a later time. Now, again, if your mic is on, kindly take a look at mute and please mute yourself. Thank you.
Mr. Berman, is it okay if I just add to the Care Monkey comment?
I would like you to add to the Care Monkey comment and I'd like you to introduce yourself to Ms. Siddiqui.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Nina Siddiqui. I'm one of the assistant principals. If you did receive.
Honestly, hi to Ms. Siddiqui.
Hi. Hi, guys. If you did receive the Care Monkey information, as of right now, we have a little over a thousand students in the school. We have 875 families, I believe, have registered for Care Monkey already, which is wonderful. But once you register, there are also forms to fill out. So at this point, I believe we have 600 and possibly 44 blue cards that are filled out. So if you have not filled out those forms, it's really important to do so. That's our way of communicating with you and being able to see which parents we're contacting for a multitude of reasons. So please make sure that once you receive your login, that you're also filling out the forms that are along with those, that login, you'll get an alert saying which forms to fill out. Thank you, Mr. Berman.
You're welcome, Ms. Siddiqui. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Labella. I'm sorry. What's the next question? You, you're up.
Well, let me jump in. See, we, we, somebody mentioned the, I guess the teachers are, are marching in the city about not opening the schools. That's just way beyond the scope of this Town Hall. And I think we should stay focused on what we can help with, right?
I hadn't heard about, I hadn't heard about that, honestly. That must be something that had come up today. I've been sort of swamped and inundated with work today, but I don't know, I don't know what they're marching about, so I really can't comment on it.
Yeah. I mean, we need to focus on what we can do, right? We are not given the option to go 100% remote. That's something that STI tried to do. They haven't been approved. I believe other of the specialized high schools have tried.
Now that you brought that up, I did present that as an option to families and that option was split almost exactly down the middle, 50, 50. So, so with, with, with data like that, it doesn't make any sense to pursue a full closure with half of our community saying no. That would, that would be, that would be foolish of me. I would never do that. I would never disrespect our community and, and the process in, in, in that way.
So I agree. And then, so then the other thing, the question is, you know, we all have to understand that nothing that we decide here is going to be ideal, you know? The kids at home have to understand that when they're home, they're home. And, you know, they'll get their turn to go to school and they get their turn to do stuff. But this is not going to be an ideal situation. And all of us, teachers, staff, parents, students, we all have to try to make the best of it. And I think, you know, that if we, if we start at that place, it'll make the discussions that we have, you know, a little bit easier and more productive.
Right. Thank you. So let's go on.
So what do we have here? So let's see. So thank you for that, Care Monkey. So that, again, I know that the graduates are picking up their stuff next week, I believe. And there's a question about siblings and can they pick up the sibling stuff as well this way? They just do it all in one shop?
We actually started, we actually started today with students coming to pick, pick things up. We had 38 students come. Tomorrow, we did have to reschedule tomorrow due to the wind and the rain that is forecasted. As long as families email me and let me know which sibling is coming or if it's a cousin or an aunt or an uncle or anyone, I can put them on the list. They just have to adhere to the policy of wearing a mask and staying six feet apart and staying outside the school building until called.
Great. Wonderful. So this would, this will now commence again on Wednesday?
Yes.
Great.
Wednesday through all of next week as well.
Yeah. And I want to be really clear. It doesn't mean the sibling should come to the school. It means that the sibling can pick up the other sibling stuff. Only the person who's registered can enter the building. So just want to be sure about that. The students are coming 12 at a time. Ms. Siddiqui and her team have done a great job organizing it, making sure everybody is safe, making sure that things get returned and things get distributed really safely and effectively. So thank you for that, Mrs. Siddiqui and team.
Mr. Berman, do we know if the school day will be four or five periods?
Right now, we are planning a full eight-period school day for both in-school instruction and for remote instruction.
Wonderful.
We plan, we plan to give students all of their subjects and in the same kind of a schedule. The one difference that we're working on and that we've done for this year is we've created a five-day schedule, Monday through Friday, rather than a six-day cycle. That doesn't have a tremendous impact on anything, but we are planning for an eight-period day. We have not heard any information about scheduling, as far as I know, other to the, except to the extent that there will be a 30-minute collaboration period in the mornings for teachers to collaborate. Now, now that could be collaborating with each other in the school as a department. It could be collaborating with other teachers that teachers are paired up with to work on or to work together with groups or pods of students. That does remind me that we are going to be setting up these pods of students so that they'll be together in groups for tracing purposes, for safety purposes. I know there was a question, maybe I'm jumping ahead, but I know there was a question about grouping friends together in, 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 in these pods. I, I know, you know, friends want to see each other. They, they haven't seen each other in, in, in a while. All I can say is we'll do the best we can. I can't say that we're, we're going to be able to, you know, set it up like on a, on an overnight trip for, with a room signup sheet, you know, who wants to be in the groups. But, but we'll do the best we can. Well, same applies to siblings in other schools with whatever schedules they have. We'll do the best we can, but kids come from many schools here. And, and I have no control over what days the other schools are, are sending the siblings to school. So I know that's an issue and a concern as well. But let's move on, Mr. Labella.
So we have a couple of, do we have protocol in place about testing? What if someone tests positive? Quarantine and all that other stuff? There's a bunch of different questions along those lines. Has the DOE set up any specific policies that you can speak about?
I can set up the policies that I've heard the chancellor talk about last Thursday with principals and what I've read through emails and information from the governor. It's probably the same information that you've heard. And that is that if there are instances in a classroom, they'll shut down the classroom and they'll do whatever cleansing, cleaning, investigative procedure for that classroom and keep it closed for at least 24 hours while they clean it up. If there are cases... If there are cases in more than one classroom, so in other words, not in the same cluster. Um, then they'll close the building down for at least twenty-four hours, and then they'll do whatever cleaning procedure that is. Um, cleaning procedures, what that's like, what that entails, I have no idea completely beyond um anything that's been communicated uh to me. Um, uh, I do know there, there's, there will be an isolation area. I can tell you that we are fortunate that we do. We have had a full-time nurse for many years. I do expect to continue to have a full-time nurse. Um, the isolation area will be with children who present with uh symptoms or adults even present with symptoms. Um, that is pretty much uh what I understand um is for, for the process. Uh, there will be some sort of contact tracing. I know that. Department of Education employees are encouraged to be tested before, shortly before school starts. In other words, the week before school starts. Um, they can be tested now. But the Department of Education is encouraging all employees to be tested the week before school starts. And there is supposed to be an expedited procedure for that, for those employees at various sites to be tested. Um, as far as testing in, in schools, uh, don't believe, uh, I, I, I'm certainly not aware of any protocols. For that. And as far as um testing students, as far as checking their temperatures, things like that. Um, I, 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 from what I have read about New York State, and again, this is, I, I, I share this with a grain of salt. But from New York State, the idea is that parents will screen their children at home before sending them to school. And check their temperature.
I have a question, if I might.
Um, yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, um, what I'm wondering is, especially because there's going to be a lot of asymptomatic transmission. Is there any plan for regular prophylactic testing and getting the results back before, let's say, nine to fourteen days, like within one to two days? Because otherwise, without both of those components, I don't see how we'll catch anything early.
I don't know. I don't know. And I don't know that, you know, anybody can require anybody to do anything. Except wear a mask. I, I don't know that you can require somebody to go and and get tested if they don't want to be tested. I don't know that. I, I don't know. Um, we have no information about that, or who's going to be doing the testing, or how long it's going to take for testing. Um, I don't know anything about that. So it's a good question, but I'm sorry, I don't.
Are we going to, are we going to leave students in the class and have the teachers come into the class? Is that the plan right now?
Correct. The plan is that students will not be moving throughout the building. They will be in one place in the building.
So there's a question, what will happen to the teachers who come in now? A child in one class gets tested positive. Then every teacher who comes into that class or who had come into that class will also have to be tested. And then I believe there's the fear that, well, that teacher who's now moved around may have inadvertently um spread the uh, the, the illness to the other classes.
That would be how virus transmission works, yes, indeed.
And it's nothing we do about it, it's just the way it is, right? I mean.
We can wear masks and stay six feet apart.
Yep.
We can do that.
So I think we need to acknowledge that there is an inherent risk in everything that we do, and this is no different, right? There, there is risk involved, and we have to do a, a risk reward ratio. Each of our families have to do that. And decide if they want to send our kids to school or if we want to do full remote learning.
I think.
Okay, um.
Here's, he, he, here's, here's, here's what, here's what I can promise you. Uh, and I, and I don't mean you, Vito. Uh, this, this is, I will promise every single parent and child and staff member. That if I don't think that building is safe to go in, I am going to let you know about it. I promise you that. I, I will not allow, I, I will not be able to sleep at night knowing that there are people in a situation that's unsafe. I will never allow that to happen, and that is my promise to you. You will know about it, and you will know how I feel about it.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. I'm sure you will.
Yes, I will.
So we're talking about exams and testing now. Some question about that. Has that been figured out? Will it be online? Will it be testing only when they're in school? Any ideas? Will that be consistent across all the classes? Your policy, will that be teacher policy?
One of the things that I can tell you is that this summer, we have. Several teams of teachers working on various aspects of. School for next year. And I, when I say school, what I mean is all of the different facets. That make up the education of, of a child, from the social emotional aspect of dealing with children. Who may not have been out of their apartments since March. And, 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 and dealing with the, the trauma, literally, of being in a situation where you haven't been out of the house. Um, uh, to, 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 to children really dealing with isolation issues. Um, not being able to socialize. So having teams of teachers working on the social emotional aspect. Both in regards to lessons and policy, right? So, and activities. So what kinds of things are we going to do? To uh embrace, for example, our new students and get to learn about our new students. To make sure that our returning students are okay, whether they come back remotely or in person. These are the things that we are spending um our time on. And frankly, what I've, what I've really instructed our staff to do. Is to spend the vast majority of their energy, efforts and time on remote learning. Because the one thing we know for sure is that we're going to be spending some time remote learning, whether it's in a blended way or all the time. And the other thing I know for sure is that we're really good at what we do in person. We need to get better, of course, at everything that we do, everything that we do. But we've been good at in-person learning for a really long time. Remote learning is something that I think we did a great job at last year, but we need to do more and we need to do better. And so our teams have been working almost non-stop on remote learning. And what that is going to look like from both a social emotional perspective, but also from a policy perspective, from an expectation perspective. So for example, what are the expectations that we have of teachers? What are the expectations that we have of students? We haven't received that information yet. We haven't even received from information that teachers are going to be doing live instruction, for God's sakes. But my expectation is that they are going to, unless I hear otherwise. Unless someone in their infinite wisdom decides that that's not a really good idea. Um, our plan is moving ahead with, yes, the expectation that we're going to be doing live instruction. But then what does that look like, right? And what does our schedule look like? What does the curriculum look like? What do the lessons look like? What kinds of things can we share that we learned last year with our teachers? With our teachers now. And I have to tell you, I'm really looking forward to introducing five new teachers that we've hired this year. To replace some teachers who've retired, some teachers who have relocated. Um, and we're very, very excited about that. Uh, more to come on that soon. So, um. I feel like I'm droning on a little bit. Let's get another question, Mr. Labella, please.
So two similar questions, and, and I could maybe jump in too. They're talking about report card grades, if it'll be like last year. Or if it'll be something different, and they're also talking about the admissions process for one eighty-seven. And these are policy questions that you, as a, um, as a community member, you can send to your, your city council person. Your assembly person, your state senator, to the mayor, because this is all stuff that your voice counts, right? So this is a policy that is being sent down through channels to us, and, you know, if you have strong feelings. Um, please, uh, you really should um share those feelings with your elected representatives. I put in the chat. The um email address for C C twenty, uh, schools dot New York City dot gov, uh, for that, that's for the specifically. Asking what kind of um standards you want for uh, for admissions to the screen middle schools and screen high schools next year. C E C tried to do a resolution, and we could not pass one. You know, they need a ground swell of individuals saying that this is what we want. For us to do that. And we didn't get that, so we didn't do that resolution. Not that that resolution means anything, but it just, you know what? It's just another uh bit of information that the mayor and the chancellor and all the elected representatives looks at. When they decide what they want to do.
Yeah, um, I'm a fan of students receiving the grades that they deserve. Uh, I was not a fan of the grading policy that was instituted for the end of the year, and I hope that, that they do not do that again. That's how uh I feel about that. I will work to make sure as much as I can that that does not happen. But as Mr. Labella said, that is something that comes down from above down to us. What, what else have we got, Mr. Labella? Let's have it.
I'm scrolling, I'm scrolling, um.
Did we get through the original list?
No, we're, we're getting close though. So we're talking about um changing our minds. So if I'm correct. Once you opt in, you can opt out at any time, but once you opt out, you can only opt in quarterly.
That's correct.
Okay.
Got it.
Um, so the DOE is going to supply gloves and masks? Or do we have to bring them from home?
I have seen information from the state, but I'm not going to comment on it. It's, it's, it's out there, but um. I, I, I do not know. I think students are expected to bring their own masks.
Okay.
Uh, if you want to wear gloves, I think you're probably going to be expected to bring your own. I think we will have a supply on hand uh for cases where somebody needs one. But I do not think that there, the expectation is that every student and every teacher is going to be given a mask every day. That is not the expectation.
Okay, which makes sense. It's like any other school supplies, the kids are expected to come in with their own.
But I can tell you that children are expected to wear a mask every day. I said this at the last meeting. If your children are not used to wearing masks, please don't wait till the first day of school and slap a mask on them. And expect them to wear it all day long. Um, you have to start practicing that, working at it. Uh, the hand washing, hand sanitizer, all those things. I know you've been working on it. But it's really critical to make sure that if we do go back, that, 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 that these are critical things to keeping us all safe. Um, and, 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 you know, it's not going to be acceptable, uh, I, I, I don't want to wear my mask. That said, we will have breaks for children and opportunities for them to take the masks off. We have not been asked to plan that yet, but of course, those are things that we are planning. Those are part of the things that, that our teams are working on um for, in regards to expectations. But I'll wrap up that expectations piece, and then we can go on to the, to the next question with, with this piece. The expectation is for, I, I, I shared with you the expectation for teachers and staff, and that. Synchronous live instruction will, 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 will be expected um a lot of the time. Uh, I, I hate to say all the time, because in teaching, nothing is all the time, because we're dealing with people, right? Um, but um, let's go, let's go to the next question, Mr. Labella.
So similarly, some questions together. It's about going outside and gym and music. And I know you said they're all going to have their electives, but specifically with P E. P E is so important now because they are cooped up in that one classroom and not getting the chance to move. Will they be able to do extended stuff outside since they're small groups?
I don't know yet. We're working on planning that, and we're working on movement around the building in a safe manner. And, and what those P E classes uh look like. I've heard in some places, they're not even allowed, they're not even allowed to have P E. Uh, I haven't heard that about New York City yet, uh, but uh. Uh, our expectation is that we deliver the best P E instruction we can with the students being, um, of course, wearing masks. And being socially distant. Um, certainly playing an instrument is, is a concern. Um, there are different sort of requirements, suggestions for playing instruments, of course. It's certainly wind instruments. Six feet doesn't quite cut it. Um, it's more like twelve feet uh being apart. But we have a large auditorium, and I'm hoping that um we can work things like that out uh as well with our, our chorus groups. Um, I'm hoping that we can do that.
So great, thank you, sir. So now the big question is remote learning, fully remote learning. Um, will that be an exact mirror of what the kids in their class who are going to school blended learning? Will it be exactly the same? Will they be having the same textbooks? Will they have workbooks to bring home with them? Will they be able to do that? Uh, and be able to follow along with their class, where they could jump in again quarterly if they uh decide to?
So are you asking me if the coordination, it, it, are you asking me, A, if it's the same teacher who's going to be teaching the children? Home remotely so that there is a, a consistency and, 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 and a sort of a, a segue or a continuity when the children come back to school?
Well, I think we've kind of all agreed that it's impossible for the same teacher to teach the school.
I know, yeah.
So then we, the next best thing is, will there be some kind of coordination between the remote learning teacher? And between the in-school blended teacher so that the kids are all on the same page?
Yes, and, and that was one, that was the half-hour planning time that I talked about, uh, that the city's providing uh for teachers uh in the morning. Uh, I don't know exactly when. Uh, I don't know how that's going to impact the school day, when the school day starts, when the school day ends. I don't know that, that level of detail yet. That has not been shared with us. But I do know that there is an expectation for planning time between those teachers. So I think the assumption there then is that, yes, and, and, and I think the chancellor was very, very clear about it, and, and the mayor was clear about it. That they're going to work very, very hard to make sure that your children have the consistent teachers. But, but that doesn't mean that that's going to happen. It, it's not going to, it's not going to be able to happen everywhere. It may happen in some places, and, and they, and we will, of course, work as hard as we can to do that. But when I have, but when I have six teachers at home to teach six hundred and thirty-five students. I, I, I don't know how that magic trick works.
Yeah, so again, we, we only have, like you said, even if we have ten teachers who want to stay home because they have conditions that warrant it. And we have, if you go by the fifty percent model, five hundred students who are staying home. The math just doesn't add up for one eighty-seven teachers to teach all of the one eighty-seven kids. So we're going to have to get teachers from somewhere, and that hasn't been figured out yet. Is that correct?
It is, aside from the fact that it doesn't address the licensing issue, because, you know, in the middle, at the middle school level, math teachers teach math. Math teachers don't teach E L A. The same as art teachers, art teachers teach art. They don't teach uh science, right? So um you'd have to have the exact number of teachers in the right licenses, license areas, home from a particular school. To assure that you're going to get enough teachers possibly across the subject areas to teach those kids who are remote all the time. It's just, it's, it's just, um, it's, it's, it's like putting a bracket together for March Madness almost. To, to get that, to get that just right. Um. So um what else, what else have you got, Mr. Labella?
Okay, just give me a second, because I got some last-minute questions. I'm looking in the chatroom, and. Right now, if somebody has a question that hasn't been answered while I do this, please um put it in the chatroom, and we'll go from there. We still have a hundred seventy-two people uh in our, in our meeting, so please, if there's. Yes, it is. So if you have a question that has not been answered, put it in the chatroom while I scroll.
Okay, so while you're looking, I'll look. Okay, so while you're looking, I'll look, I see, how is full remote learning going to work? I'm not really sure I understand that, but we're working on a regular eight period schedule, five days a week, having children do live instruction the best, to the greatest extent possible. I think if we are, you know, someone said to me, well, gee, you know, it worked out really well when, when, in the spring with live instruction. Yeah, it worked out well because teachers were using their own files bandwidth and they were streaming from their house. It's, it all breaks down when you try and go through a very narrow pipeline at the school. So, so that's, that's, that's what we're planning right now. What testing will look like, we're working on. There are different ways to test children so that, yes, of course, plagiarism and cheating are all concerns. But we are learning from other schools. We're learning from other programs. There are things that are constantly being created. It's, it's, it's kind of a really exciting time to be involved in education from a particular perspective as, as there is a lot of innovation going on. I can tell you, we're in a fortunate place right now as far as our, our budget is concerned in terms of being able to buy some new things and new technologies that are available. We're going to be able to do things like that. I'm excited about that. And so, yeah, so in terms of testing and things like that. What have, what else have you got, Mr. LaBella? You got a good one?
I do. So what platforms are we going to be using? Are we going to be using Zoom, Google Classroom, iPlan? What do we got?
Okay, right now, we are planning on Google Classroom and, and perhaps Zoom. ILEARN has not been working out real well. We like what it has to offer, but it has not been working well. Hopefully those kinks will be worked out and perhaps ILEARN is basically an enhanced level of Google Classroom. It sort of encompasses what Google Classroom is and uses Google Classroom, but allows a finer level of teacher and user control and some, some great features.
So I guess people are really curious about, okay, what does the day one of school look like? I mean, which kids are going to show up? So does, so we have four day ones, right? Because we have broken up into four things and what do we expect?
Three groups.
Three groups.
I guess it would be three day ones, right? For, for, for each group coming in, you know? We expect, you know, we'll have, we, we expect to have homerooms. We expect to have virtual homerooms too, as we did last year. We're going to see, see children on a screen every day. Children will have homeroom, they'll come up to class. They'll probably, my guess is they'll have grab and go breakfast. If they want breakfast, they can bring it up to the classroom with them, have, have breakfast. After homeroom, we'll do morning announcements, instructional start. Again, I, I look forward to that. We do live instruction, we do in-person instruction really well. And so I think a day will be fairly typical, except for the fact that children, there will be fewer children in each class and they won't be moving around the building as much at all.
And, and parents will be notified via email when to send their kids in and what day? Is that correct?
Oh, it would be very, very clear. You will, you will know what group your children are in. You'll know what sort of cohort they're in. You'll know, you know, what, what, what days they could be in. I think that's one of the benefits of the two days, two days of school, four days home because it's easy to put that on a calendar and you can see for basically as, as far out as you want, what days your child will be in school.
Great, so first day of school is September 10th, is that correct?
I'm embarrassed to say I don't know. But I know, I know.
You, because you, that's because you work all summer. That's right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really.
You don't get a break.
No, I don't. It's all one long.
Yes, I know. It all blends together, but thank you. I, I don't really know either, so we're in the same boat.
That's funny. I, I, I need to put that date on my calendar. How particular sanitizing is going to happen? Cleaning? I don't know. I know that the custodians, there's, there's a lot of talk about this backpack, that, that, that someone's going to wear this backpack and spray stuff around. And that's going to somehow sanitize stuff. I know there's a lot of talk about, about the backpack. So I don't know. I know the custodians union was talking about concerns that they don't have enough people to do the, the amount of sanitizing that needs to be done. That'll, that'll be part of ultimately the final report that I share with you about before, before school opens. Because I guarantee you, I promised you, I'm, I'm going to tell you straight out. I don't think it's safe to send your kids to school. Again, with the understanding that, that look like Mr. LaBella, Mr. LaBella said, there's always a level of risk. If you walk outside, you know, you can get hit by lightning, God forbid. Well, maybe I shouldn't say that on a day like today, but, you know. But, but, but if there is clearly a safety hazard, you're going to know about it from me.
Mr. Verman, can I say something real quick?
Please, yes, sir, Mr. File.
Sure, I'm just, I'm looking at the chat and I'm looking at a lot of the questions and concerns about, you know, remote learning and will it be equal to the hybrid and how, how it's going to go? And, you know, we are in the process of, of putting that all together. I just wanted to say, you know, I know that most parents in general are very happy with our school year after year after year, which is something that, you know, is a great source of pride to, to all of us. But I think this year specifically, we're going to need a lot of input from you guys on how things are going and to make those tweaks and make those changes in order to, to improve. I think we're going to be very adaptable. So, you know, as, as things are going, if you feel like, you know what? The, the kids who are getting only remote are not getting enough of something that, you know, would be an easy fix for us or, you know, we, we really would love to have, like, a lot of these, a lot of, you are very concerned. We're going to need your help this year a lot more than past years. So it's a great sign that we're having a lot of parents coming in. So, you know, as we're starting, please pay very close attention, you know? Email us, send us suggestions, send us the impressions that you're getting from your own kids and what you're saying. You know, I think that's, that's really important, that especially in September and October and November, when we're just getting this thing rolling, that we get tons of community input. That's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. File, great point.
No problem. So sir, so now I, I'm getting a lot of parents, generous parents, parents that want to work hard. They're saying that what could we do to get a T1 line or a T3 line or whatever the line is that colleges have? That we could have live remote streaming for all of our classes every day? Is that something that is a matter of money or is technology or all of the above?
All of the above. I've put in a request to have our bandwidth increased. I did that right in the beginning of the pandemic. The, the, the DOE network is probably one of the most secure networks in the world. It's one of the largest networks in the world with over 2,000 sites. It, it really is an incredible thing. So, yes, I, I will certainly inquire more about that level of bandwidth. I do know that that's something though, that would have to go through the, the, the DOE channels and whether it's school construction or something along those lines to be able to integrate and mesh with the DOE network. It is a very highly complex network.
So if there's anything, if there's anything that the PTO can do, let us know and we'll coordinate with parents and we'll marshal whatever resources we can, even if it's just political capital and, and we could see if we could get this done.
Absolutely, great. Okay, so I saw some questions about teachers and if all of the teachers are coming back and, and deadlines for, for, for teachers. I do believe the deadline for requesting accommodations to work from home has, has passed. And there were several teachers who did put in for accommodations. Have kids clean the tables? We generally don't have the children do things like that. But I, I would encourage you to send your children in with hand sanitizers and wipes and, and things like that. No offense, kids, but kids can be pretty gross. But that's okay, we love them anyway.
Mr. Verman, a parent asked about ACES and, and they will be receiving therapy?
Yes, the plan is not only that they'll be receiving therapy, but they'll be in school five days a week. And yes, receiving their therapy from their providers. Absolutely, whether it's OT, PT, APE, whatever that might be. We're really excited. We just hired a new adaptive phys ed teacher. That's, that's for students who don't or unable to receive traditional physical education because of their disabilities. And that was a very, very hard position to fill. But I think we were really lucky and found a great candidate. She's going to be terrific. I think the kids are going to love her. What else have we got?
So is there any way maybe we could do a big, a big CIB program to try to help our sixth graders, our incoming sixth graders get more acclimated? I mean, they're really not going to get the chance to.
Yeah, and I know we, we, we do have, we have extensive programs like that. We have our Class 800, we have our G mentors, we have our student ambassadors. And they're working hard together with the social emotional group as well with Mr. Chechi, our media specialist and also a man of many, many talents. But we are working on just those kinds of things. The G mentor program was started by a student about three or four years ago. So we've had a really strong mentoring program for the sixth graders. So this, this is a nice way to expand that remotely. So, yeah. Schedules and times for when remote learning is going to start? No idea, no guidance or information about that yet. What else you got, Mr. LaBella?
So we talk about ventilation, ventilation and honestly, we have a 100-year-old building. Ventilation for us is, unless I'm wrong, is opening the windows, right? We have the window AC units. We open our windows and that's the ventilation. There is no separate ventilation system in our 100-year-old building, is that correct?
Partially. So I could share with you what I know about ventilation. I spoke with Mr. Mascherini, our custodian, about that. The building has not been quote unquote tested. He's been told to turn the ventilation systems on. A building of our size has different ventilation systems. The primary ventilation system has probably not been turned on in decades. And I don't know that it can even be turned on. And frankly, I don't know what's going to come out of this should we turn it on. It might not be a really good idea. There are other ventilation systems. There's a ventilation system for the auditorium that's separate. There's a ventilation system for the gymnasiums downstairs that's separate. So there are some ventilation systems that do work. However, that primary system, I do not believe is functional.
Thank you. So then it goes back to the importance of those. Somebody have something? No? So the AC units, is it in your budget? If an AC unit dies on us, is that something that you're still prohibited from using your funds on?
It's not in my budget, but I know it's in yours.
And then, and in my mind, I'm thinking that I've got to really pay, I've got to keep money in abeyance because that's probably one of the most, one of the most important functions of our, of our money is that getting those AC units in.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if, if your mic is on, on, please mute it if you're, if you're not talking with us. But yeah, I think, I, I think that's part of it. But again, I, I am no ventilation expert. I can't tell you what is appropriate or not in terms of ventilation. I, I've told you everything that I know about ventilation. Maybe parents don't know this about our school, but every classroom has air conditioning units that work thanks to the PTA and thanks to the efforts of our custodial crew to maintain them and make sure that they're operating. The PTA replaces them and we, 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 we have them maintained. They're taken off site and cleaned out periodically. So we have functioning air conditioners in every single classroom. We have air conditioners in the auditorium, although it's not enough. And we have some air conditioning in the cafeteria and that is not nearly enough.
What about changing the filters or cleaning the filters? Is that something custodial staff can put on their list of things?
They are absolutely on top of that. I have no concern about that. That is something that, that they do regularly. It's a, it's part of their normal routine and now even more, so.
Yes, please thank our custodial staff for the extra work that they're doing.
I sure will. I saw some pictures of the building today from, from the return of the students. And I got to tell you, it is sparkly clean, just really, really amazing.
Do these, do these ACs have HEPA filters? Because the ACs themselves could be a cause of spread because they're mostly then recycling air within the room. Is it a good idea to even replace them or use them?
Well, I know it gets to be at least 90 degrees in September, so they're going to be turned on. They are not HEPA, there are not HEPA filters. And I cannot tell you about what that does, whether that's an effective filter or ineffective or if it is creating a worse problem. That, that I don't know. I haven't heard that air conditioning creates a worse problem. I mean, I know we've got ours running in the house, but that doesn't, I know it's not the same thing, so.
There's no way we could have class in September without the AC.
Well, listen, it happened for a long time. It happens in plenty of schools. I mean, it's hot, it's uncomfortable, it's, it's brutal, but it happens.
I'm wondering if that, those conditions would be more of a detrimental than, or even would that be more, would, would that be more conducive to the virus than the AC? Who knows, right?
I don't know. My wife was a teacher in PS229 and she didn't have, for a long time, she didn't, even in the new building, she didn't have air conditioning. It was brutal.
So one more question, and I don't know if you have the answer to it. It's a great question. I think it's above all of our pay grades.
Bring it on.
So if someone from our school, or any school for that matter, decides that they want to leave 187 and do privately for one year, can they come back and reclaim their seat?
At 187?
At 187.
Typically, they have allowed students to return within a year, within a year.
Okay.
But given current admissions, I don't know the answer to that. That would be a question for the Office of Student Enrollment. I, I will defer the answer to the Office of Student Enrollment on that question.
Told you it was a good question.
It is a good question. It is a good question.
So.
All I, all I can tell you is, I, I, all I want to do is help. Anything I can do to help. We're here to provide a service to families and whatever, whatever we can within my power, that's what, that's what we're going to do.
Okay, so I think the last email question I have is a child that doesn't want to wear a mask or has difficulty, he will be sent home or sent to the dean or you will just treat him as any other disciplinary? Is that correct?
We're, we're going to deal with those kinds of issues on a case by case basis. I can't tell you how we would respond to a particular issue without, you know, there, there, there are many variables that are germane to a particular situation. I can't really say that. What I can say is the expectation is that children will wear masks for the majority of the time that they're in school. It's a requirement. We will provide mask breaks for children. They will obviously have to remove masks in order to eat. But beyond that, I don't have any level of detail that, that, that I, that I can share with you. can share with you. I, I wish I did and, and it pains me that I don't, but as, as soon as I get it, I'm going to get it for you and, and, and share it with you.
So Kenneth has a good question. I think we've answered it. You expect kids, if they are on their remote day, you expect them to check in like every other day? And if they don't check in, they'll be marked absent, is that correct?
What do you mean, check in? I expect.
I mean, you expect them to, you expect them to, yes, be there on the remote day. And if they're sick and they're not there on the remote day, that's an absence, same as every other.
Of course, the remote day is a full day of school.
Yes.
You're expected to be, you're expected to be in every single period with your microphone and your camera on.
Yes.
If that's the, what the teacher instructed for that day. If they're, you know, and, and, and I do expect that for the most part, for some parts of the lesson, there will be live instruction where children have to put on their cameras and be seen and talk and communicate. Maybe, maybe not with the teacher, maybe with groups of students, maybe with their partner, maybe with their group. Um, but yes, yes.
Okay, a lot of this information, a lot of these questions are duplicates.
Let's try and get it, let's try and get, get in a few more before we close.
So the curriculum, as far as you know, you'd planned algebra for all. We're still going to do that. I mean, the curriculum is going to be the same that you planned last year before this all happened. It's just, we're trying to adjust it for the remote and blend it.
Yes, uh, you know, Mr. File mentioned a question, is, you know, is, is this going to be a mirror of that? Is it going to look like it looks like normally? Yeah, no, nothing is going to look like normal because I think this is a new normal for us and it's not something that we've ever done before. I expect the remote learning to get better than what it was last year. I expect us to improve on that. Whatever level we were at, we're going to get better at it. That's what, that's what education and instruction is all about. That's what I expect from children. That's what I expect from adults too. Let's get better at what we do. That's, that, that's what learning and that's what education is, is about. And if we can help students learn to get better at the things that are important to them and that they want to get better at, you know, that's what education as a process is all about. And that's what teaching children to be critical thinkers and problem solvers is all about. How do we tackle a problem? How do we approach it? How do we optimize? These are all things that, uh, that we love to teach our children to do and they're so good at it. You know why, parents? Because.
Masks? So the masks, it could be the N65, whatever that number is. It could be the surgical mask, it could be a, a piece of cloth. It's whatever they, whatever they think is appropriate, right?
Yes, and as, as, to, to, to bring back visions of dress code, um, yeah, something that's appropriate, uh, uh, you know, and, and the material, the material doesn't really matter. Right, right, but, you know, let's be tasteful with what you're communicating.
Okay. All right, we have a few more, hold on.
I see some things. What supplies do you need? The, the academies will be sending that out. Um.
The supply lists are on the website, Mr. Berman?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Siddiqui.
Yeah, they're on the main website in each academy page, as well as the summer reading list.
Great, thank you, Ms. Siddiqui.
You're welcome.
Uh, G mentors.
So a good question is, uh, if, uh, if a child has a, an in-school day, he's not feeling well, can he join his remote friends and, uh, get credit for the day and not be marked absent?
If a child comes to school, they're marked present. If they go home, they can join in with remote learning, of course, if they're feeling well.
No, no, so, so if a kid who's supposed to be in school tomorrow isn't feeling well, instead of being marked absent, can he just join remotely?
Oh, I mean, I don't see why not. Um, I, I mean, I certainly don't want to prohibit a child from, from getting an education. Uh, certainly that's not, you know, that certainly shouldn't be a pattern.
So we're going to make reasonable accommodations whenever we can.
We always do and we always will.
I know. Winnie, please send me the link like last time and I will do my magic and I will get this up on the PTO, uh, YouTube page and I'll send out an email so that everybody can look at it at their leisure. Also, two weeks from today, at, uh, 3:00 PM, we're going to do another meeting, the same thing, open forum. Hopefully we, the same crew here, hopefully we have more information and, uh, we'll just, you know, listen, that communication and about, uh, you know, just trying to make people feel comfortable as best we can.
Thank you. And please, parents, if there is anything left pressing unanswered, uh, you contact Mr. Labella, contact me, jberman3@schools.nyc.gov. I'm happy to communicate with you. Uh, parents, as you know, when you send an email, I respond. Uh, sometimes I miss them, so please, if I, if you send an email and I miss it, send, send a reminder and, and I won't feel bad. I won't feel like you're being a pest. Uh, please, sometimes I miss things. If I let something through, please call me on it, say, hey, Mr. Berman, I sent you this. Please help me. Uh, I'd like to get them in.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. So.
I thank you all, yes.
The last meeting we had was in the morning. This meeting is in the evening, so that's why the next meeting is going to be in the late afternoon. I'm trying to break it up like that, just to try to get, different people have different schedules, so I thought that was the fairest thing to do.
It works for me and you know, Mr. Labella, I'm there whenever you need me.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
And thanks, parents and students for coming. Thank you, staff members. I do appreciate it. Uh, staff members, I'll be meeting with you soon, uh, talking with you a bit and, and parents and students, I look forward to meeting with you again, uh, within the next, uh, certainly, uh, two weeks. And if there's anything that we need that arises that we should meet beforehand, please mail, I'll let you know and we'll meet. Thank you to our host and thank you, Mr. Labella. I appreciate it. Have a great night, everyone.